Are we ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Mm-hmm.
I need to get off social media for my own little... I'd like to call to order the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five Foster Gloucester School Committee meeting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Joyce? Mr. Mara?
Here.
Mr. Dupuis?
Here.
Mrs. Keeling?
Here.
Mr. Joyce?
Here.
Ms. Pezza? Ms. Ferreira?
Here.
Mr. Rizzo?
Here.
Could we please stand for Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four, student staff recognition.
So yesterday, we got some amazing news. The Rhode Island Art Education Association every year celebrates the Art Educators of the Year. This year, the two thousand and twenty-six Middle School Art Educator of the Year was named from Pontigan City Middle School, Shannon Black. She has inspired her students to create, explore, and express themselves through their art. She has been an educator at Pontigan City Middle School for the past twenty-six years. Shannon said, "I look forward to my future years here doing what I love, inspiring young artists to create freely and believe in the power of self-expression through their art." So Shannon, come on up. So ladies and gentlemen, Shannon Black.
And we're going to skip ahead to number nine A, personnel report. Just because we have a full agenda, I want to just acknowledge... Where is Bob Shields? Oh, there you are, right? We have a new hire at the middle school. Some of you may know Mr. Shields around town, but he's recently hired for our Unified Arts Program at the middle school. He has a Bachelor of Arts in Secondary Education, English, Journalism, and also a graduate certificate in School Administration and Supervision, Certified English seven through twelve, Computer Science endorsement through Rhode Island, State of Rhode Island, and Coaching Certificate. We are thrilled for you to be part of the Pontigan City Middle School team and the Foster Gloucester team as well, and we welcome you. So you are free to say a few words if you'd like. Okay, we're gonna convene to executive session to discuss or vote on the following matters. Per Rhode Island General Law forty-two, forty-six, five, legal advice on pending litigation. Update investigation of allegations of misconduct, either civil or criminal. Pending litigation update, student B. H. Doe versus Foster Gloucester School District. Ride section twenty-four dash...
Actually, we're not going to do that. We did that in Gloucester.
Okay. Okay. Per Rhode Island forty-two, forty-six, five, privacy of student records, homeschooling. Per Rhode Island forty-two, forty-six, five, A two, union negotiations, one Pontigan City Teachers Association, two Pontigan City Association of Educational Support Personnel. Per Rhode Island forty-two, forty-six, five, A two, collective bargaining. Update of unfair labor practice, case number ULP six-four-three-three. And per Rhode Island forty-two, forty-six, five, grievance, Nippon Grievance forty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, zero-three.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
We're gonna stay here and ask all of you to leave. No. Not now. Sorry.
46-5, legal advice pending litigation. And then after that, we decided to come back to public session. So we're going to reconvene after we get through the agenda. No votes were taken. And can I get a motion to seal the?
I make a motion to seal the minutes of executive session for that portion of exec.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Approval of meeting minutes of October 7th, 2025?
I make a motion to approve the open meeting minutes on October 7th, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstained. I was not there.
Thank you. Okay.
I make a motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes on October 7th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstained. Thank you. Amy. Superintendent's report?
So in the Gloucester meeting, I don't know, is Bob Shield still here? Is he still here? No. Oh, so we recognized him in the Gloucester meeting, but he is a new hire for our Unified Arts program. We are excited. He comes, he lives in town. You may know Bob Shields from our rec department and coaching. He comes with a Bachelor of Arts Secondary Ed, English and Journalism. He also has a graduate certificate in school administration and supervision. He has a computer science endorsement, and I know he's been working with our computer science teachers at the middle school and the high school. And he has his Rhode Island coaching certificate. We are really happy that he's in addition to our Unified Arts program. And we recognize him in the Gloucester meeting. Please tell him I recognize him in this meeting as well. We're happy he's part of our team. You will also have contracts in there. We have an open position still for controller or senior accountant. It will not be both. It will be one or the other. If you remember, in September, we had a resignation, and we just have not been able to fill the position. We have both open, and Anne and Alyssa have been interviewing. So my ask is that when you look at both contracts, you approve both the way they're worded. There's a maximum amount for the salary. It is budgeted, and we will not be hiring both. But we didn't want to wait until December meeting if we can find a qualified candidate before then. And you have one resignation.
Can I ask a question, please? Can we approve a contract retroactively? We've done that in the past.
Yes.
So if you want to hire someone, if the position's already existing, we can approve a contract. So I don't feel comfortable personally approving two contracts without having a person in place. We many times have approved a retroactive contract.
Yeah, so it's just the language of the contract, but you did that, I thought you did that the last meeting. You approved a contract and we didn't have a person in place?
Well, it was a position, because that position didn't exist. That was the assistant meeting?
Yes, yes.
That position didn't exist. That's why we approved that. So that's why if this position exists, I'm just saying personally, I don't feel comfortable, so I'll vote against it only for that reason.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I just, we can approve things retroactively. That's all.
As long as we don't delay, we've been three months without it?
No, no, if it's an existing position?
So I'll work with Greg on what that looks like.
That's an existing position, right? Greg, so?
We've held both. Anne started as a senior count, if you remember.
It was just we're filling, just filling the position. So whatever you choose to do?
Okay.
I'm explaining to you why I would vote against it, because I'd rather have a position.
So I have choice?
Yeah, so now you feel comfortable doing it. But I'm just going to explain to you why I'm going to vote against it.
Okay. All right. Continuing with my report, then, the legal, there was a legal institute training on October 20th, which was hosted by the Superintendent's Association, the School Business Officers Association, and special ed. And I think Kyle Santos is here. There she is, right in front of me. I'm looking back there. Kyle attended as well. It's an annual event. It's very, very helpful and beneficial. We both attended. They just share, like, legal changes, cases over the past year that impact education specifically, like personal devices, AI. So definitely will help with our policy development. And then there was a special section on special education. So I was really happy that you were there with me. It was helpful. With respect to curriculum and planning, we are piloting an open science ed at the high school. Our science teachers really took the lead on this. It was offered through RIDE, and I'm pleased with that. We are continuing with Khan Academy and Khan Mingo to advance our student learning, especially at the high school. That was really helpful and beneficial in supporting our SAT scores. On October 16th, Carleen Mari, I know Carleen's here. Thank you, Carleen. She oversees our wellness committee. There was a Healthy Schools Coalition Annual Wellness Breakfast, and you have information in your packet. She gave us a summary of not only that, but where the wellness committee is going and the things that they're doing. And it's really been a pretty, been pretty busy. But the Healthy Schools Coalition Annual Breakfast, I think we had 10 faculty and staff, 10 from the region, and we actually had some from the elementary school. So we had two tables, which was nice. We had the October 22nd community event for the CTE for all Greenovation Lab, if you remember at the last meeting. Karen had spoken a little bit about that we were going to have it. Well, we had it. And thank you for those of you who were able to attend. We had, so Mrs. Cook, Mrs. Keeling, Mr. Mara. We had representatives from the governor's office, Senator De La Cruz, chief and lieutenant from Gloucester PD. We had RIDE representatives, higher ed, community partners, and of course, our CTE teachers. Pretty excited about this and what this project holds as potential, really collaborative efforts throughout the state for it. And pretty excited about it. On October 24th, we had our PD day, and thank you, Brad, for hosting the special ed update. It really was what's my role in special education, and entire faculty, staff, instructional teacher assistants were a part of the day. I think it's the first time we've really done it that way, and it was really, I heard good things about it. After that, they had choice to attend sessions. The theme was AI, which is the focus was to explore how AI can practically support teacher instruction and enrich student learning. And that PD was delivered by our instructional technology team. Dave and his team and teachers facilitated those sessions. It's always really helpful and beneficial when your PD is given by your colleagues and peers, because you get to work with them every day. So if you have a question, you know where to go. But it was really scaffold, and it was tailored so that every student, every teacher had like an on-ramp. I heard really good things about it. So thank you for the team that put that together. And then, as you heard at the beginning, congratulations to Shannon Black for the 2026 Rhode Island Art Teacher of the Year. Then I just want to briefly update you. This Thursday, I'm attending a session that the commissioner put out, accountability results. So in the December meeting, I'll give you the accountability report as I did last year. But I want to highlight where we are in our test scores. For RICAS, we had approximately a 4% increase in ELA at the middle school. So we went from 46% to about 50%. And our SAT scores at the high school increased from 67 to 70%. That's pretty admirable, because the state RICAS for ELA is 34%, and our middle school was 50. And the state SAT for ELA is 52%, and we were 70. So really good work. Just wanted to acknowledge that. And for math, math is a struggle across the state. We know that. But our middle school did make gains, about a 2% increase, 31 to 33. And the high school made gains as well, 32 to 35. So I'm hopeful. I'm confident, and I'm happy that we're trending in that direction. And then I did include in your packets the wellness committee update. I would really encourage you to read that. There's a lot of good information in there. There's a lot of good work. There's a lot of what's been done, but then also what's going to move forward. And then I know Ms. Mari would love if one of you would be a part of it. I think it's, right? We're definitely looking for a school committee member to participate again in the wellness committee. So if anyone is interested, please send Kyle an email. I don't think so. I don't think so. Okay. Okay. All right. We're going to hold you to that then, because there's some.
When is the meeting?
Carleen? When are the meetings?
We're going to schedule another one in November. It's going to be Tuesday. We're going to have exec today.
If information is sent out about the time, if I could make it, I would come.
Okay, perfect.
Depends. That was part of the reason why I couldn't do it.
Was the time. Okay. All right. Thank you for that. All right. That's my report. Thank you.
I need, I had a quick question.
Sure.
Dr. Malaz, you mentioned the AI information. I was wondering if our policy committee might be able to take a look at providing some guidance on an AI policy or AI guidelines for us? I know it's a great tool to use, but it feels like something that we should give some guidance to both teachers and students?
Yes, and the Rhode Island Department of Education has released AI guidance. And schools right now across the state are in the process of developing those. And we will have input from our admin team, Dave, RIDE's guidance, and then we're also going to look at other districts if they've already developed them. So it will go through our subcommittee, yes. It's an interesting space to be right now.
It is. No, for sure. And that was one of the comments that I heard from a couple of teachers that I had the opportunity to speak with earlier this week, that they welcome the tool for the most part. It's just giving them some guidance on how to govern its use, both on their end as well as the student end. And ironically, I tried to use Copilot to write one here while we were sitting here, but my license expired, so. But we should, you know, don't hesitate to use the tool to write it too, right?
Thank you.
Okay, number 10. Oh, sorry, motion to approve the?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel report as presented in the packet.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that one of the contracts? Yes, it is. Okay, so no.
Okay. Opposed? Shelley, abstentions? Thank you. Number 10, approval of monthly bills, October?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the monthly bills dated October 1st, 2025 to October 31st, 2025, in the amount of $961,677.45.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Finance update, budget and finance? Anne?
Yep. So for, through October, we're at 26.77% collected for revenue, and expenses were at 24.5% collected. Tuition bills went out today for quarters one and two, the out-of-district tuition bills. And our orders were in a few weeks ago. They are finishing things off-site, and we are on track to finish that on time. That's it.
Great. Anyone have any questions, Fran? Thank you. Approval of budget adjustments, quarter one, fiscal year '26?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the budget adjustments for quarter one, fiscal year '26, as presented in the packet.
Can I get a second? Second? Any questions?
They're all Yoko adjustments. Yep. When we had to change Jaco's.
I didn't see any one have transfers. It's just.
No, they're just, for this quarter, it's just Yoko adjustments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. 12, facilities update. Approval of vehicle purchase?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the vehicle purchase as presented in the packet in the amount of $57,089.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sure, Beth.
So my question is, what do we need an F-350 with the plow for? We just approved a plow contract for the last, at the last agenda.
We only have one working facilities vehicle at this point in time. Initially, we, these, many of the school committee members are aware of the condition of the vehicles. We walked in 2023. Currently, the vehicle that we're using, it's really not roadworthy. It's not worth spending the money on, and ultimately, it's time for to replace the vehicle. It's 13 years old.
This was part of the fleet that we talked about. So this is literally taking one off the road and putting a new one on, and we did budget for this. This was in the budget.
And the current vehicle that we have now is the, is basically the, it's a plow truck replacement. If we have any issues with the one vehicle we have right now, we do not have a secondary vehicle with a plow, so.
So my question is, and that, we had the plows, like, that was like 2017, they started 2016, the other one that broke down. That's because we used to do our plowing back then. So my question is, why do we need an F-350? I support getting. I support getting vehicles to go back and forth to the schools to check on them, but my question is why we need a $57,000 F-350 with the plow if we don't do our own plowing?
We, we still have lots of asphalt that needs to be cleared. We still use the plow every single storm. The middle school, high school, all, they don't do the parking lots, I mean, they don't do the sidewalks, they don't do any of the fire lanes around any of the exterior of the buildings. It's, it's a need.
Well, you wouldn't use the, an F-350 for a sidewalk, that's a snow blower or something else, and the fire lanes are required to be done, that's in the bid.
So.
Fire lanes are in the bid.
They don't, the, they do not go past the fences. There is quite a substantial driveway around the perimeter of this building that we plow. I mean, I do, I.
Just a question.
The committee is well aware of the condition of the vehicles.
Yeah, no, like I said, it was just, it was before, when we used to do our own plowing, that's the only reason why I was questioning it. Thank you.
We still do a substantial amount of plowing to get these buildings open.
Just a quick question about the specs of the vehicle. Is this like a base model, is it like?
It is a F-350, single rear-wheel drive XL, no frills with a plow.
Does it have a, a truck, a full dump bed in the back, or is it a flatbed?
Negative. It's a 146-inch bed, single rear-wheel drive. It's regular pickup.
So it's got a full bed, is what I mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so I've seen the vehicles you have, and I, I do know that you, you do require some replacements. My question would be, what plans do we have in place just to make sure that, you know, we don't have to replace this one again?
So ultimately, we, we discussed this last year. This was incorporated in last year's budget. This is not the first time we, we, you know, wanted to approach this, so ultimately, it's just that time. Ultimately, we started Ford Fleet Account with all of our new purchased vehicles, so ultimately, we'll be able to keep better track of maintenance and hopefully, you know, longevity's key.
Good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Capital Project Subcommittee Update. Steve, do you have anything else to add? I'm sorry.
Nope, so basically, capital projects, the boiler project is, you know, as we know, well underway, all the, all the equipment is being manufactured. The Aldridge boilers should be shipped on December 3rd. Pumps will not be available till the same December 3rd, so ultimately, we're not going to push the boiler replacement here at the high school until the, the heating season is over. So basically, after a conversation, you know, April would be the target start date. As you know, we approved all the A&E fees for the boiler replacement at the middle school and our hot water systems at both high school and middle school, so we've had multiple meetings and discussions in relation to that. Hopefully, we'll have approved plan, or, you know, plans by next capital projects team meeting. The state incentivized lighting project is about 80% complete with the north building right now, that's going along smoothly. The Learning Inside Out grant, that is underway. Basically, we have to be substantially complete by the end of the month. We anticipate excavation beginning hopefully this week. The security access and in, access control and intrusion systems for both the high school and the middle school, we're about 95 complete here at the high school, we're just working through some punch list items. The intent is to transition into the full operating platform down at the middle school in the winter, Christmas shutdown, and that's pretty much it for our capital projects.
Can I ask a question, please? I'm sorry, you shot April out for a date, but the heating system, and I don't know if that was for, will the heating system be completed by April?
No, 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 we don't not want to run the risk of, of tampering with any sort of boilers in the middle of the winter, so ultimately.
Oh, so we're not touching them right now?
No, no, no.
So we're gonna start in April? So where are the boilers being kept in the meantime?
Industrial burner surface.
So do we have, is, does that gonna impact the warranty on them?
Negative.
So the warranty is gonna start once.
It's from the installation date, it's from when they're commissioned.
Okay. Do we have like a certificate to protect, of insurance on them there to make sure that, I'm sorry, like nicks and bakes, like do we have to?
So the, basically, they own them when it's in their possession, and we don't own them until they're installed within the confines of our building.
Okay. And how did it go with the oil tank? Is the oil tank fine?
We had our tanks inspected and currently right now, they are fine, but they will need to be, you know, addressed at some point in time. We are developing an action plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Negative.
Just two quick things to add on to that.
They're, they're grandfathered in from the time of the installation, so until I want to say 2027.
So for the larger committee to, just two more updates. One that we identified as a future project that we'll take a look at is some of the septic systems that we have throughout the campus.
Yep.
Just to get a better understanding of how they actually operate and a management, management plan for them as well as just the ongoing maintenance has been a struggle for, for the team here. It's sort of like a game of septic system whack-a-mole, which is just with a not pleasant ending. So we're gonna try and get ahead of that, we're gonna try and plan which ones need to be upgraded. That won't be part of this cycle, but it's likely something that we'll track for the next five-year plan when it comes through, parts of it, not necessarily the entirety. And I would say that that's just a function of the way that this whole property was built out, you know? We've been, two schools were merged into one, and so on and so forth. The other one is the athletic fields. It was a quick timeline to have something to report out this time, but we're gonna try and work with the athletic department to have an update on where things stand with the design-build process for that at hopefully the next meeting, if, if that's, we can get something solid to present, but it was discussed briefly.
Just one, if you don't mind, one more thing. I know the heating system was a big concern for you. Is it still, do you have it patched enough to get us through the winter? Is it?
Oh, yeah, no, so it's, it, yeah, no, we'll, we'll get through the winter. We had it serviced, we did our annual maintenance, it's in good operating condition at, at this time. We are due for internal inspection, which can potentially jeopardize, jeopardize the operating condition of the boiler, so we're trying to push that back and, and we're negotiating with Hartford Steam Boiler right now to prevent that inspection, keep the boiler running at this point in time, get through the winter, and be ready for the replacement in April.
Tell them they can come inspected in March.
No, 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 I mean, they, they understand the complexity of an internal inspection on a boiler of that size.
That size, okay, good. All right, thank you for clarifying, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thanks, Stephen. Technology update?
It's been a while since I've come up. Most of the updates have been nothing, but I did want to make a mention of something interesting. So back in April, we had a school committee meeting, and I had come to the, to the committee for our Wi-Fi license bid that we had gone out for, and we got approved to do that, it was around $71,000, which was done back in April and May. But with that being said, the technology team worked with our E-Rate company that helps us figure out if we have any E-Rate funding available, and over the past six months, we actually found that we could get reimbursed for some of the purchase that we had done back in April. So as of about two weeks ago, we got about $29,000 back from our E-Rate Category 2 funds, with the hopes to use that to purchase a server, because our servers are about seven years old, and it's about time to go. But at least we got something from something that we did that we had budgeted for. So it's nice to have that little bit of an extra kick, and I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Policy update, number 14.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve rescinding the central office space policy number 3611 as presented in the packet.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the revised first reading of the automated external defibrillator, AED model policy number 6242 as presented in the packet.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the revised first reading of the provision of services by the region to local district policy number 3610 as presented in the packet.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? 10, update of Northwest Special Ed. So this is just, this is just to keep you updated last, last week, so, so last August, August of '24, Northwest Special Ed shifted fiscal agent, suggested fis, shifting fiscal agent from Situate to Foster-Gloster. So we started that transition this past year, the '24-'25 school year, and as of July 1st, we became the fiscal agent. You'd known that, that was coming, and Ann and her team worked really hard to make that happen, so this is an update now, because the agreement that you will be signing, if you agree to sign it, is an annual agreement, and last, last week, Foster withdrew, put their letter in to withdraw from Northwest Special Ed. So currently, this is an update, just to let you know, I'm not sure what that means for, I'm not sure what that means for Northwest Special Ed. I do know that, I did have a conversation the other day with the interim assistant superintendent in Situate, just to see where they are, because that will leave Foster-Gloster, Gloucester, and Situate, and this won't change until July 1st, so we finish the, the year together, sharing services. And Situate is unsure, because she's the interim superintendent, so I will have a better plan or update at the December meeting, but just to let you know that we, Foster has withdrawn, and we will look at what the fiscal impact is and what our, our services are or can be. Can you clarify what that, what's, what that means for?
The region.
Like? So I don't, I don't have, I mean, the fiscal impact would be the, the biggest question. I don't have that breakdown yet, it's, it's pretty detailed, because there are four districts that share, and we share based on percentages of students, so it changes every, every year. So Foster-Gloster.
The share is 7%.
So Foster-Gloster is like 40.
No, Gloucester. Our impact is 7%.
Actually, the share, I think you're higher, I think you're, you're like 12% the share if I could be, yeah.
There's so many different combinations at different parts of who pays and who won't, because in some scenarios, when we're just talking about preschool and elementary, there's only three districts, so the services provided by them are split three ways. There's also, you know, when we look at things like.
Do you want to go over the microphone? I'm just, if you're. Yeah. Yeah.
I believe that there's four different scenarios of who pays what percentages, depending on like what we're talking about. So it is, it's, it's a lot of math, really, kind of figure it out, and again, the federal funding, what you get through the CRP, changes every year. This year, it dipped quite a bit. Also, that has a play on that, as far as, we also, the amount of students that when we look for the October enrollment, that hasn't come out yet from RIDE, but that will also change everybody's percentage.
But our cert, so, so my plan, my purpose for updating you is right now, I'm not making any changes, and our percentage will change slightly if Foster withdraws, but the region, keep in mind, I'm, I'm talking to you for the region, which is just six through 12, but the elementary schools share a bit more than, than the region, because it's OT, it's PT, it's, it's child outreach, it's coordinators, right? There's a lot more than just Brad and Kyle.
Yeah, I mean, we have a whole, a whole early childhood department that's just devoted to the three elementary schools, which is a big piece.
So that won't have a large impact for the region, but it, it will at, at the Gloucester, the Gloucester level.
So did, did Foster withdraw or not? Okay, can you share why?
Well, this isn't a Foster meeting, so we can't, this isn't a Foster meeting, so we'll, we can talk about the impacts, if you want to have a Foster meeting, we could post it on the agenda as a Foster meeting, but.
And the, the purpose of this, and, is that the percentages do change, so our percentage will go up a little bit higher simply because we'll have, we'll have less students, but our services will, will stay, we'll wait and see what, what Situate does, and then we'll evaluate from there. So I'm not making any decisions, we're not, I'm not asking you to withdraw right now, I'm asking you to stay the way we are, and we can, we can look at what our, what our potential next steps are. So for us at the region, it doesn't have an impact, and even moving forward, it wouldn't have an impact necessarily, because the employees are, they're, they're Northwest Special Ed, but Foster-Gloster is the fiscal agent. So we're able to, I think, keep, right, what we have. So I, will OT, PT speech?
I can go over the who, who we are, that would be helpful. So the Northwest is myself, the special ed director, the assistant special ed director. We also have administrative assistant, a census clerk, a preschool coordinator, a child outreach assistant. We have several screeners that, part-time screeners that we use. We have a BCBA, we have one physical therapist, two occupational therapists, and one part-time occupational therapist, one CODA, or that's a certified occupational therapist, and that's who we are, is Northwest. So all of those are Foster-Gloster regional employees right now.
Okay. So we're not making any changes, we'll wait and see what happens with Situate, and December 31st is the, is the date that if, if a district decides to withdraw, you have to notify the executive board and then a, a letter to, to the commissioner, correct? A letter has to go to the commissioner, because it's a, it, yeah.
And I believe it still has to be approved by the commissioner as well.
Has to be approved by the commissioner, okay.
I believe the letter from Foster to the commissioners already.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so, so we have a December 31st, so next month's meeting, we'll have more information, and if we need to do things differently, we will, but I'm also waiting to see where Situate is.
When does Situate meet?
They're meeting tonight, but it's not on the agenda? Yeah. Can I ask one other question? So do you contract out your employees?
No, they're all Foster-Gloster, right now.
They're all, so they're part of the region? Region, they're now regional employees? So the region is the fiscal agent? Okay, okay, thank you. Can, Pat? Should we wait till public comment?
We really would prefer that we stick to the rules, which is, you know, we have rules and the rules.
So the question, I have a question to ask, I'll tell you what my question is, I'm gonna ask. How many students do you service? How many students are, are we, are we, how many of our students are you serving?
You want me to answer? I, you know, I, that's up to the chair.
I'm sorry. Renee? I mean, I, I think I can, I can answer, is all of our special ed students would be serviced through Northwest Special Ed, that's our special ed director, assistant director, but your special ed teachers are not part of that, it's your additional services. And Brad, we can get a breakdown for you if that's what you need, but it's been in effect Northwest Special Ed since, I don't know, 1970 something, or 80 something, yeah. It's shared services, Pat.
I just wondered how many students do you service?
Thank you.
You don't know their number? Is all of our special ed students receive this?
I don't think that's enough.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Brad.
You reach out then, questions?
Yeah, I'll have that information associated. Thank you. Approval of the 2026 school committee meeting dates?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the 2026 school committee meeting dates as presented in the packet.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? 17, public comment related to open session agenda items. And before we start, I'm just gonna make a statement saying that the school committee meetings are properly deemed public meetings to conduct the business of the regional school district and to hear public comment related to that business, and not public forums, to provide a platform for the introduction of a private agenda. So we are asking that everyone please keep their public comment to open agenda items
So, we are asking that everyone please keep their public comment to open agenda items only. And they please sign in and write your agenda and your town, thank you.
And the Northbl- Northwest is an open agenda item, so it can be discussed, just to clarify.
No, it can't be discussed, but we can't respond to that, yeah.
Since it is an agenda item, I would like to say something, please, um, I did say something earlier. I've been on the committee for sixteen years, we've never done anything like this, and I'm very disappointed that we're starting now. That's just my opinion, but that's how I feel.
Walter Steer, Gloucester. First of all, I think you ought to rearrange your schedules on your agenda, so you don't have everyone waiting out here for forty-five minutes to an hour. If you're gonna do at the beginning of a meeting, have the start of your meeting at a certain time, and then people will know that's when you're gonna start the meeting. On the facilities. Gary King couldn't be here tonight, we met with Renee a week or so ago, and he brought up a very good point about maintenance contracts. And I didn't hear anything about that tonight, I don't know if you're still thinking about that. I know you could do it at a, uh, future agenda item, maybe? You don't want to say anything, Greg, what?
Walter...
What are you so nervous about, the people having something to say?
Walter, technically, what you're talking about is not an agenda item, it's a techi- the technology...
It was facilities.
The facilities updates had two topics, okay? If you, that's perfectly, if you have a question about that, direct it to the administration, we could try to get it on the next agenda.
I already talked to the administrator, station about it, I'm wondering if we made any progress on it.
Okay, and, and if we can discuss, well, we could consider that as a request to put that on your, the agenda for the next meeting, okay?
Fine.
Thank you.
Well, the contracts came up, it wasn't a discussion, we did discuss the contracts. So, it became an agenda item, but it was not...
The ma- maintenance contracts?
Maintenance contracts came up in discussion.
I, I don't believe so.
About the trucks, about the, about the equipment?
He did bring up maintenance regarding the, um, coming to do the inspections, he did bring up the maintenance regarding the inspections. Thank you.
I know you did talk about the plow trucks, so, is that all right, we can talk about that, Greg? Are you ca- not gonna even talk to me now?
I said, of course.
All right, I know we bought a brand-new plow truck, Bee Plow, Sandler Steel, Sander, what was that, last year or the year before?
Wait, wait, what?
Last year?
Uh, all right, so we have that, that's, and I'm sure that's still in great shape. Now, we just bought another one. You know, I think for what we have to do with plowing, I know, I looked it up, it is in the budget, you have seventy thousand in the budget for the last three years, so, you know, it is...
For plowing or for...?
No, for vehicle, just for vehicle. So, I don't know if that's a good spend, you know, a way to spend our money. Uh, also for a future agenda item, I know we always do our, uh, student counting in October for the proration between the two towns. Could you give us an idea of if we're, if Foster and Gloucester are still losing a lot of children? We're losing, they're not going to the school anymore. You know, like last year, we lost a hundred people, and you didn't have a good answer where, where those people went. And I was wondering, now, in October, I know you do a student count for the proration, so maybe we could get some of those figures?
Yeah.
And also, could you give us a idea of how many outer district students you budgeted, and how many we actually have?
So, I don't know if I can answer all those, but if not, I'll put them on next month's agenda.
No, I know it has to be in it, or not, a future agenda item.
But I, okay, sorry.
Don't get in trouble, Renee.
Yes, thank you, Pat Henry, Gloucester. Um, I just want to second what Mr. Steer just talked about. Um, if you would consider doing executive session either right in the beginning or at the very end. When I was on school committee, I used to ask that of you all the time as well, and for a while, I, I think you might have done it. I think it's best practices in most committees.
I think, Pat, I think in the three...
Can I just let me finish, please? When I was on town council, we always have executive session at the very end. So, I just think it's respectful to your public. You've got a lot of parents here who have kids at home, they need to go home and get ready for work, you have teachers, whatever, and for us to sit out there for an hour? I just don't think it's, I know legally you can do it, but it doesn't seem like a very respectful best practice, and it kind of seems like you really don't care about the taxpayers here. Um, Renee, I'm sorry I upset you by saying that, the look on your face. But, you know, let's think about it, because that's how it comes across.
But that has not been the way the meetings have been run, so I'm sorry you feel that way, but there's no disrespect.
Why should people have to sit out there for an hour? I bade my comment.
Pat, three, in the three years I've been on this committee, and you were on the committee for two years, that is probably the first time we've ever put executive session at the beginning.
It's not true. Um, that's not true.
We, as in past committee?
That's not true. I, I don't want to just...
I, I just want to say, like, the suggestion about the start time was noted, and we appreciate the comments, revise that.
So, you know, I think we, we've just watched Mr. Steer kind of say, you know, I don't know, my, my, I guess the point I want to make is that you all aren't coming across as being very transparent as a committee. And you ask for information, even just the way you, you read your items on the agenda, it's, you know, you're, you're, everything is very cryptic, there's very little information that you're giving this public, who pays for you to run these facilities. And I just don't understand what's, what's the rub? And, and, and what's the secret? I find it disturbing as a public, a- a- as somebody who's been in town for thirty-five years and has served the public for a good part of my life in town. We never operated that way, and if you're not aware that you're coming across as rather secretive and not very transparent, you need to think about how you're coming across. Thank you.
Um, I'm Hope Curry from Gloucester. Um, and just to follow up on facilities, um, I know there was recently a new lockbox put in on the fences where, at the bottom of the, um, driveway, with, between the parking lot and the athletic fields. And that lockbox was put in, uh, after a staff member had to cut the fencing to allow an ambulance in, when my son broke his femur on the football field. And there was not an ambulance on the football field at that time. And no one on the field had a key to the gates. And it's also come to my attention that with this new lockbox, the coaches still don't have a code to it, and they won't be given a code to it. And I just don't want that to happen to someone else again. Like, not only were we waiting thirty minutes for rescue to arrive, because none was at the field, um, then there's also the stress of wondering how they're going to come in once they got there. And then I was told that they had a key. Like, in hindsight, I was told that, oh, well, they did have a key, but then I was told later than that 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 key wouldn't have, um, gotten them in anyway. So, I'm very thankful to the staff member who did cut through the fencing so that the ambulance could get up. And I just feel really strongly that someone on site, coaches, like, the, many of these coaches are teachers, um, that somebody needs to have access to that. Or if not, the gates need to be open during an athletic event. Um, I was told that, I had bit, I have had contact with Mr. Joyce, he did tell me that the rescues now have the codes to the lockbox, and that's great in theory, but like, what if they don't? What if somebody forgets it, or is somebody, or it, whatever? So, I just wanted to bring that forward, and hope that perhaps some change can be made, and that more people will be able to unlock that gate, or the gate would be unlocked, and having proper ambulance staff on site. Thank you.
Is this public comment or not?
You need to sign this.
I did.
Yeah, he did.
I didn't see you sign it.
Hi, Ron Servacio, Foster. Um, um, background, I have three undergraduate, uh, education degrees, I have a master's degree in administration of secondary education, I have an MBA, and one other master's degree. I was on the school committee for ten years, eight years as chair. I'm here tonight to talk about administration of education, which is not as specific on the agenda. However, this is what you're all doing, including Greg, all right? So, uh, what I'm gonna say about administration of, of secondary education, and I can be overruled at any time, um, administration, continuity of administration leads to positive outcomes in educational quality. Turnover usually results in a step up or a step backwards. Constant turnover creates chaos, right? There are things going on, which, um, I don't know anything about, um, that I foresee people in the community starting to get itchy, especially the politicians. Remember people that are here. Uh, Riley to Gru to Mario, and then to eighteen years of Michael Barnes. Eighteen years that produced between twenty and thirty million dollars' worth of income for the taxpayers and a quality education system, all right? This is a maintenance, uh, committee, and I asked Mrs. Pezza to be on the committee to hire the superintendent when Michael left, she told me my present was not necessary, all right? But I will tell you this, the people in this community, the people here, if you have turnover, and you let this silly little instances turn this thing into chaos, you're gonna regret it. There are almost fourteen thousand schools committee, uh, s- sorry, school districts in the United States. I can guarantee you, any one year, a quarter of them are having an instance that happened here. And that's, um, where there are children, there are problems. So, this committee, this superintendent, and this community needs to move through this and decide whether you're gonna do, um, continuity or you're gonna have turnover, but be very careful if you create turnover, very, very careful, because there are, um, things coming from the outside, both money statewide and federal-wise, that will affect the education quality that is presently here. I thank you for the, uh, ability to, um, speak to you.
Hi, my name is Angela Cambio, I'm the chair of the Special Education Local Advisory Committee, and I am here because I wanted to ask a question about the OT and the PT employees that are currently contracted with the region. Now that Foster has voted to separate from Northwest, will Foster be able to contract with the employees who are currently employed with the region? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, my name is Jeffrey Gales, I'm a resident of Gloucester, I've been here about twenty-five years. Um, both of my stu- both of my girls both went to school here, some of, some of the teachers here know. Um, there's a petition that went around that you guys are fully aware of, um, for a total and accountability. Um, and this agenda, this should be on agenda for eleven B for fiscal year twenty-six. We could, we, we have, we're running the risk of this being a much bigger issue from, from a financial standpoint. Um, this should definitely be a line item for outside council. Um, I think a lot of people in the community, including those who signed a petition, are very worried about this, um, the ramifications of it, both now and later. Um, and we've also seen in the past with other districts, the gaps, uh, that affect student safety and learning, um, and delaying the risks, delaying risk, uh, risk more, uh, injury to, to children. And really, it's, at the end of the day, um, a good school equals a good community. And if this is not addressed, not budgeted for, I think we're running a huge risk here long-term. Once again, thank you for your time, and I hope that you guys definitely consider putting this for the fiscal year twenty-six. Um, quarter one, budget item, thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?